So it's my pleasure to call to order the Monday, February 12th, Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Herzog, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can, please.
I will not give up the flowers in my heart just because the world is a hard place. The world is only a hard place because it needs more flower-hearted people. Poem by Nikita Gill. Wednesday is Valentine's Day. Just a friendly reminder. It's a day we show love to our partner, kids, family, friends, pets, and community. A day we shouldn't just celebrate once a year, but all year round. We come here tonight for the love of our city. Let's have love be at the center of our discussions and decisions, and hopefully we will make the world a little less hard today and for generations to come. Happy Valentine's Day.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to item four, which is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone wish to make a motion? We have a motion by Commissioner Collo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion on tonight's agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Okay, this brings us to public comment. Just a few reminders about public comment. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issue, whether or not it's on the agenda. I ask that comments be directed to the Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, and come up to the podium. For the record, we ask that you state your name and your address. Please be mindful that the City Commission wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight, so therefore comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, not per topic. And there's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem. Always feel free to reach out to us via email or otherwise. Please note that we typically don't respond to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and we'll address those questions when the agenda is discussed. If your issue tonight or questions tonight aren't germane to an agenda topic, our city manager and community engagement specialist are also taking notes and can get those questions answered for you as well. Important to note, if you do want your question to be answered right back to you, please leave your contact information with the community engagement specialist, who will be right back down. I think she had to grab something off her laptop, Judy Davids. It's always helpful if a question's asked, we know who to get back to. With that, who's first tonight?
Hi, I'm Mr. Fisher, 310 West Sixth Street. I'm here tonight because I had a passenger the other day in my car, and they told me a story about something their son had experienced in our city that I was very upset about. I only got one side of the story. That's all you can get from one person. But from the sounds of the story, it sounds like his son, when he was falling asleep at a bar, was instead responded, a police officer responded instead of EMS. Didn't sound like, from the story, he was causing a disturbance other than that they wanted him to leave, and I think EMS would have been more appropriate. I think it's already going through the judicial process. But this city has a bad track record of how it deals with incidents regarding security and bouncers at establishments. When I was assaulted a couple of years ago, our city attorney failed to prosecute it. Even two years ago during Arts Beats and Eats, because the one guy at Oak City Grill, who the place I hadn't gone into, I lived two blocks away from it, he didn't like that I was looking at the music inside. And the following day, him and his coworker chased me as far as the corner of Sixth and Washington. The bouncers in this town act with impunity. There needs to be a higher standard for their conduct, and the attorney needs to take citizens' complaints seriously when they've been assaulted. As far as the marijuana stuff, keep it on the outskirts if you can. Over by O-Tech, drugs are always free there. Take it easy.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Harrison, City of Royal Oak. Regrettably, the Royal Oak financials are in the eighth percentile relative to surrounding cities. The parking system fund deficit and three other fund deficits are under scrutiny. The going-out-of-business curve on page 56 of the budget report shows that the 10% minimum fund balance criteria will be compromised in 2025-26, regardless of the spending criteria. And if only essential/mandated funding is provided, there will be a minimum fund balance of 10% expenditures in 2025 and will be insolvent by 2027-28. You change the charter limits on borrowing in order to provide more money. Page 26 of the report shows that the 2016 pension fund bond increased the fund balance from 59.3% to 71.55%. The balance is now back down to 59.55% due to reduced contributions during 2017 and 218. So you've been living off of the pension fund bond that you claim to have corrected the pension fund deficit. Now you want to build a community center with the YMCA. This will increase the deficit and negatively impact the downtown business due to the elimination of surface parking. It's like you're behind on your home mortgage and looking to buy a cottage up north. There has been a significant increase in staff by this administration, and two commissioners have spoken out against staff reductions. And you still want a pay raise. You complain about the Headley rollback provision, and you want alternative housing for seniors. This is contrary to aging in place. The new Comfort Station on Troy will be a public nuisance. The former Comfort Station at Second and Center was demolished in the 1950s for that very reason. Agenda item number 13, the Fifth Street improvements do not include providing for delivery truck parking at the Central Street Alley. I brought this up to the DDA, and they failed to add this to the list. Agenda item 14, temporary marijuana events should not be permitted at the dispensaries.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you.
All right, who's next?
I'm Gail Mizalko, 1514 Northwood Boulevard. I want to thank the Traffic Committee for hearing us, the residents on Northwood Boulevard, regarding the proposed bump outs and considering alternative methods of traffic calming. I also again want to thank Holly Donahue, who was here, and her team for the many reiterations and redesigns of traffic calming methods on Northwood. I know that that was probably very time-consuming. The majority of Northwood residents prefer speed humps to bump outs to address both speed of traffic and traffic volume. Everybody would agree that high speeds are dangerous. High traffic volume does negatively impact home values. And a lack of available parking space negatively affects property values as well. The bump outs that were originally proposed would take parking space away from many homeowners along Northwood Boulevard. The Federal Highway Administration ranks speed humps more effective at reducing speed than speed tables, raised intersections, curb bump outs, and chokers. So I'm here to encourage you to endorse the recommendations of the Traffic Committee and approve the installation of speed humps on Northwood Boulevard. Thank you.
Nancy Sumner, 1502 Northwood Boulevard. And I would just like to bring something up about the speed humps. On Kettlepa, there's one speed hump that does absolutely nothing. And I just want to make sure, when the Traffic Committee considers this, that they can, that they go with the speed humps that are on Benjamin, because they slow down the traffic much better than the one on Kettlepa. The other issue is, the one that really slows down the traffic are the two speed humps on Merrill Street, across from Woodward Avenue. The other thing I want to bring up is, there's still speeding on Northwood, and I don't see any police presence out there to give any tickets for people speeding or blowing through the stop sign at Northwood and Bonneview. Then I'd also like to bring up the sidewalk repair. I see that you're looking to give the, award the contract to somebody, but how can you award a contract when none of the sidewalks that have problems with them are marked? I fell last May and tore my rotator cuff in three places. I called the city, and I was told to go to the homeowner. Well, I thought, hmm, at least I called the city. I waited a few months, nothing was done. I went to the homeowner and explained to him what happened. She called the city. They came out, and they put that little gravelly stuff that they use to fill potholes on the sidewalk that was raised. They missed three of them. People can still fall and injure themselves. My medical bills were over $100,000. I was lucky that I had insurance. So you better mark, make sure you mark those sidewalks, because there's a heck of a lot of them that are raised. And rather than replace them, why not shave them down like other cities do, which is less costly to the homeowners than replacing slabs of cement? Let's see. Let's see. And then the Master Plan Survey that you guys put out really didn't ask specific questions where people could really answer those questions and understand what they were answering. So I'd like that survey to be redone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sumner. All right, who's next?
Hi. Kate Pauls, 1805 Northwood Boulevard. I'm just up here to support the proposed plan for traffic calming, including the 16 speed humps on Northwood Boulevard. My husband and I have been looking forward to this for quite some time. In September of 2021, Pete invited the mayor to come to our neighborhood to see the traffic problems in the area. And he did visit and talked with me then about the potential solutions. So ways, GPS, Google Maps, often direct drivers to use Northwood Boulevard as the best and fastest route to get from Woodward to Crooks. I've done it myself from various locations, and it always puts me down Northwood. And the 2024, the January 2024 Traffic Committee Packet included a study that showed traffic volumes as high as 2,000 vehicles a day on that road. So I've seen statistics that speed humps reduce speeds by 6 to 13 miles per hour. So with speed humps, traffic will move slower. GPS will stop suggesting Northwood as the best and fastest route. And then the current drivers, who routinely already cut through, will seek alternate routes if the speed bumps inconvenience them, and ultimately volumes will be reduced. The signed petition that Nancy circulated shows that over 70% of our residents favor the plans. It's worth noting that out of the 71 households listed, 50 were in favor. 13 were not reached, and only eight actually said no. Outside of that, Traffic Committee did a great job inviting public participation and listening to our feedback.
Thank you, Ms. Pauls. All right, who wants to speak next?
Janice Wagman. I wasn't going to mention it, but I did go to a community engagement thing put on by, or presentation put on by Holly about traffic calming, and it's going to be on WROK. So for the people at home who are listening, keep an eye out for it. It was excellent. It explained a lot about it. It gave a lot of the details on all the work that they put into it and that kind of thing. So keep an eye out for that. Couple issues. The resolution you have going tonight for the water affordability program. I agree, it's a great program. I think nobody should have their water shut off or their houses foreclosed on due to unpaid water bill. But I want you to consider the fact that, for some of us, $2 a month is a lot. In fact, it's an 8% increase in my water bill. And we just had a 12.2% increase in our water last year, and the finance director is talking about increasing it even more in the next budget year or in the near future. So $24 to $36 a year doesn't sound like a lot, but to some people, whose Medicare went up by, I don't know, 8%, and Social Security only went up by 3.2%, it is a lot. So when you're considering millages and extending things, it would be really great if you considered that there's a group of us that can't afford to keep adding on and adding on with millages and Headley overrides and that kind of thing going forward, and try and keep it coming from the general fund or taxes that we're already paying, even at a state level. The other thing is, I've mentioned this before, so I want to step further. And I haven't had a visual display or visual aid in a long time. Like, seven years ago, I did this. But I went to Berkeley, because I drove down Coolidge, and there was a sign there indicating there was a public hearing. And we don't do that. All we do is what the state requires us to do, which is publish enough newspaper and send a notice out to homeowners within 300 feet. Berkeley does this. Other cities do this. They put a sign out in the property, in the front lawn of the property. And when the homeowner, or the business, or the developer is going to have a public hearing, they sign a document that allows the city to come out and put this in their lawn. So you really don't have to change an ordinance. There doesn't have to be a fine or anything. You can just do this. And I would really like for transparency's sake, and so that the residents in the neighborhoods and beyond know that something's changing in the city. So that's what I'd like.
Thank you, Ms. Wagman. Well, it seems we have a few special guests in the back. Perhaps I'll call on them next to come on up.
Okay, my name's Tamara Fober, and then I'm here with Emery and Charlie Fournier. So do you want to present first, and then?
Sure.
Or do you want me to introduce?
You can.
All right, we're here to present the special fundraiser. We're hoping to team with the community on, and I'm helping to facilitate it at Keller Elementary and Royal Oak Middle School.
Charlie, Emery?
So it's about, like, crazy socks, and we're asking our community for some support. And so basically, um...
Would you like to take it from you, Charlie?
We want, we would like some donations of... Okay. So we're doing this because we want to help people with Down Syndrome. What is Down Syndrome? Down Syndrome is a genetic disorder that people are born with. This condition is when a person is born with an extra chromosome. Chromosomes are made of proteins and DNA that are organized into genes.
Okay, so we picked Gigi's Playhouse because it is a Down Syndrome Achievement Center and it's right here in Southfield. And they provide programs, therapeutic programs and programming free of charge to families and people with Down Syndrome. Crazy Sock Day is typically March 21st because there's a third copy on the 21st chromosome. So that's kind of the relevance behind the world, Down Syndrome Day. Anything else?
Oh. So we wear crazy socks. Well, we wear our crazy socks on March 23rd? 21st, sorry. To show awareness to people with Down Syndrome, crazy socks can also represent a person with Down Syndrome's own individuality. And a few more things to add is that people... Okay, so why, like, crazy socks? Because people's own individuality. And so what we're asking from our community is, like, an example. At my school, there's a box for people who can donate, like, new crazy socks that will later be sold to students at our school and the community to later wear on March 21st. And the money we make from them will be donated to Gigi's Playhouse. Same goes for Keller.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you guys going out there and raising awareness and looking to the community to raise some funds in a fun way with crazy socks. I know, I think I have a pair of socks that come in monthly in my house, or at least I used to. I got a lot of socks. And they're always fun to wear. And so, quick, any questions for anyone? Okay, Commissioner Herzog?
Where do we donate the socks?
Yeah, that was going to be my question.
Well, we were hoping maybe we have a box in the police station to collect them. We have a flyer made up that you can also buy them directly from the Amazon wishlist, and they will get sent to the middle school. Yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, thank you. Thanks for supporting them. My brother is Down Syndrome, so that's why it's kind of a near and dear place for me.
All right, so you guys will work to make sure to get the word out, then?
Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir.
You know, we have a lot of people that walk in and out of the doors here every day. Maybe we can host a box here in City Hall also. I mean, the plates are great, but they might get, like, donut crumbs or something on it. So maybe here at City Hall.
We'd love that. That'd be great.
Yeah, I think that'd be really good. And we can put a box here. People can drop off the socks. They can go to Amazon. And then you guys are taking point at both Keller Elementary and Royal Oak Middle School to get those socks circulated, sell them, raise the money, and bring it back to a good cause, right? Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
You know, those kids must have a good mom, that they're such great leaders.
Well, you know, I think they get their kindness from her, for sure. All right, anyone else wish to speak tonight at public comment? None? All right. Well, I'm going to close public comment and bring the meeting back to this side of the table. Thank you for everyone who participated in public comment tonight. We appreciate it. Certainly, I made some notes here for discussion when we get to the agenda topics. So that brings us to the consent agenda tonight. I'll ask my fellow commissioners, does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda tonight? No? Does anyone wish to make a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion by Commissioner Cheesam. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion on the consent agenda? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. All right, that brings us to item seven, which is a resolution in support of low-income residential affordability and water shut-off protection. And so I brought that with the help of our city attorney and Commissioner Collo to bring this to tonight's agenda, because there is pending legislation right now in Lansing to help, for the first time in a long time, reform, rehabilitate, and put some programs in place related to water affordability. As noted in public comment, water prices have been going up over the years. We've seen crises in water systems just north of here. As inflation has occurred and people struggle to make ends meet, that is not something that is unique to any particular zip code, including Royal Oak, which has a number of families that potentially could find themselves in a tough situation. Currently today, we, most water systems are disconnected from... Yeah, we buy our water from the Great Lakes Water Authority, but each municipality pretty much runs their own, you know, buy and resell of water. They amortize in to the cost of the water, the price to administer the programs, to pay for water repairs in the distribution lines. And all of that comes up, and somebody gets a bill to have water available at their home to drink, flush their toilets, everything we need water for. And we hosted here with Senator Chang, right in this chamber, a number of leaders from across the region, from Washtenaw County, Wayne County, City of Detroit, Royal Oak, and of course, county officials, to talk about, you know, this legislation and what it could do for the, not just the interests of our residents, but for the interests of our water systems as cities and communities that we run. Currently today, what you'll find is that there's very little ability for those who happen to get arrears in their water bills, either because they had a big leaky toilet, or they lost their job, or they're on a fixed income. And those avenues are really just kind of a one-off negotiation with our water billing department, with little flexibility to forgive that debt. And then the strong arm comes out. If you don't pay your water bill, whereas we might not necessarily shut it off, you know, the only recourse communities have are to put liens on people's homes, come after them through collection. And ultimately, what happens is, is that it gets written off as bad debt expense. And bad debt expense, if you've ever run a business or know how a business operates, that's typically, you know, translated into the price of your goods anyways. So taxpayers, or I should say, water rate payers today in the City of Royal Oak are already paying for this bad debt expense and the price of the water that you pay, because we have to keep the system whole. We have to keep the water lines managed. We have to keep the sewer lines fixed. We have to do the things to keep the system running. And so this legislation, Senate Bill 549, does a number of things to tackle the morality of the problem, meaning that water is life. the morality of the problem, meaning that water is life, people as, to have their own dignity, uh, deserve to have water, uh, must have water, there's a cost to it. Um, and for some folks that, you know, find themselves in a situation where, um, hardworking people that are, or, or people that are retired, or whatever the case may be, that have lower incomes, uh, will and often struggle to pay their water bills where there are remedies for them to, to get help. Um, and, um, part of that is a $2 a month, um, insurance, I'll say insurance, that's how I define it, on the water bill, uh, so that a fund is available through the state to help municipalities like ours, help eliminate that bad debt expense, and help fund and support people that may be struggling. Also, it provides that homeowners who qualify could get plumbing repairs done where they have water leaks, so if you have a leaky faucet, toilet, something where it's hard to call a plumber out at, you know, hundreds of dollars, sometimes thousands of dollars to fix things, where there's assistance that prevents that sort of leakage from happening, which is better for everybody in the system, and of course, good for the homeowner to stop that water from, um, you know, adding more, uh, to their already desperate situation. And so, this legislation, um, is a step really in the right direction, and I asked that along with the recommendation of Commissioner Collo and the help of our, our city attorney to show at least support either as a city or even as a water authority, so to speak, in the city of Royal Oak, um, where we need tools and we need state help and we need avenues to help folks pay their water bill or pay parts of their water bill. Um, anytime you give people an opportunity to pay some of it, um, is better for all rate payers in the system than when the debt gets out of control and they just abandon it altogether, and, and God help if they abandon their homes because they have liens and, and all of these other things that, that come with it. So, um, I think it's a sensible legislation, I think it's something that will always be an iterative process, but it's something that, you know, isn't unique in this state. We see it with utilities, we see it with gas, we see it with electricity, um, we should probably see it with, I mean, not to say people today could live without electricity, but, you know, it's much harder to live without water than it is, um, gas and electricity. So, uh, that's why it's on the agenda today, I think, in the current situation in the state legislature where, you know, it's 50/50 and one or two votes can make a difference. I think it's important that we voice as a water authority and as, I should say, a water biller, um, and, and what we struggle with, with, with debt, bad, bad, uh, debt expense, um, and also as folks that are genuinely concerned about those who may be struggling in our community, what this legislation would mean for them, uh, putting our, our thumb on it a little bit to say, hey, Royal Oak supports this, um, is the reason why, um, we, or I set it beyond on tonight's agenda. If you look at the actual resolution itself, because I know there's been discussion about, like, hey, I haven't read the hundreds of pages or whatever, uh, the resolution, um, certainly discusses what the bills intend to do, what they are, uh, the resolution in its words, in its language, um, you know, allows for this body to say, hey, in general, we support this kind of thing. I may not agree with every line, uh, and that's okay, but in general, we, we want our state legislator, legislature to tackle this problem, uh, for a multitude of different reasons. So, that's why I put it on. I thought I'd tee it up extra carefully here and see what my fellow commissioners think. Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. That was quite a tee-up. Um, so I think, I mean, this is really important legislation, I think, um, I was reading this and it just reminded me of when I worked in legal aid, this was a problem that led to a whole cascade of other problems. When people had past due water bills and then were evicted or had to leave, they couldn't find another place to go because if you've got, uh, if you've got water debt on your bill, your, your new, um, your new landlord won't accept you. Uh, so it just led to a cascade of problems and I, this was, uh, finding the funds to pay off that debt so people could get into a new home was challenging, and I think this, this solves a really big problem. Um, and I think you said this, Mayor, but I just, I just want to say, you know, we don't, we are, we collect money for water, but we don't collect additional money, we don't pocket any of the water money around here, we, we charge what it costs us to deliver the water to our residents, uh, and as you noted, this, there is, we already are paying for this insurance because there are, there are debts that don't come in, and we have to pay for what we, uh, we have to pay for it, so we collect it from our residents. And I think in the ideal situation, as we collect these funds, like, you would see the adjustment in our rates over the long term as that, as this insurance is, becomes the insurance. Um, and I also want to say that I very much appreciate the drafting of this, which definitely seems like it was reflective of some of the concerns that have been voiced before, as you state, like, really laying out each of the bills and what they say, and then at the end saying, this is the type of legislation that we would support without having to go in and say, this bill is the one. So, uh, thank you very much for that, uh, for the draft, to the drafters, nicely done, and, um, I'm glad to see this on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Macy. Anybody else? Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, you spoke of this, Mayor, but I'll, I'll add on to it. The, uh, my concern is, um, sustainable water use practices. Um, and as you said, there are funds in the program, um, for people to get a plumber to fix their leaky toilet or their leaky faucet, um, but people may not care or notice. Um, and so, I just, as the, as the people who are actually drafting the legislation go forward, I, I want to make sure there are, there are, uh, teeth in there or a very aggressive program to communicate with homeowners that that service is available, make sure that plumbers are available, there are places where you can't even get a plumber at any price. Um, and so, I just, I want to make sure that we've got that strength in the legislation so that we fix the problem, costing us less and, you know, serving the environment.
That's a really good point. Commissioner Collo?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank you for your leadership on this, um, for hosting Senator Chang when she was here, and the city and staff for helping out with that. Uh, it was a great event, um, uh, with the city of Detroit, uh, County Executive Colter, um, and many other reps. Um, this, you know, clearly water is a fundamental right. We know that's, you know, we need it, we all need it to live. Um, Royal Oak has been very proactive in, whereas we don't shut off someone's water, but that cost gets borne between all of us, in all our homes and all our houses. So, um, I think that this, uh, when enacted, will truly bring down the cost of water for the system, that pits it, the system as a whole, as opposed to taking it off the city books, uh, which allow us to continue our upgrades and investments that we make. So, uh, thank you again for bringing this before us tonight.
I think you make a good point, Commissioner Collo, and I think Commissioner Macy made it as well, is, in the long run the curve, you know, the anticipation is that people pay more of their debt. If you have a $2,000 water bill and you make $22,000 a year, you're going to walk away from it. But if there's a system in place and a call center in place and these things that allow you to go in and say, look, I can make, you know, I can catch up on that, I can make some of that payment, and I get some assistance from the state because I've been out on my luck, um, you know, ultimately, we collect more on that bad debt expense, which means, um, we don't have to charge, uh, that estimate in the rate bill to be whole, as Commissioner Macy said, because whatever it costs is what we charge. Mr. Collo?
You know, I should just mention this also, because I promised my son I'd mention this. I was talking to him the other day, he asked me, Daddy, where'd you go in the middle of the day, when we went to this press conference, and I explained the water affordability and what was going on, and I said, so Bud, what, what should we do? People, you know, can't pay the water bill. It's like, well, you should get them water. I said, but how should you pay for that? He said, well, charity. And he's right, like, you know, even this eight-year-old, the second grader is realizing that people need water and that should be a mechanism out there to help people get it who can't, who just can't reach it. Um, and I think that's important, too. So, um, you know, e- even these little kids have this great idea. It's unfortunate, I know, watching the news, uh, this weekend, um, you know, some of our counterparts in Macomb County are completely against this, uh, and this $2 a month rate increase. Um, and it's sad to think that we might be okay with people not having water in the Great Lakes State, you know, with more natural water than anywhere else in the world. So, um, you know, I guess, on this one, I'm going to follow the, the wise advice of a little eight-year-old boy.
Anybody else? Commissioner Hunt?
Um, well, Commissioner Collo said it, water is a fundamental right. Uh, while we may not turn off water here in the city of Royal Oak, there are many of our neighbors that do, um, and water's not only, um, uh, does not only hydrate us, it keeps us hygienic and sanitary, and with that comes dignity. And the fact that, uh, before coming here today, I was watching the news and there was a woman, it was a segment about a woman who had a four-figure water bill in the city of Detroit and panicked about the fact that the city may turn off her water, and luckily, Royal Oak's own Hank Winchester, uh, went to the, um, to the DWSD and was able to assist her with that. But there is that panic that many of our neighbors have that there may not be water available to them. And, um, you know, I, I think when the issue happened in, in Flint where, um, it turned out the water there was poison, we all heard, water is a human right. And if we can do anything, um, within our ability to assist people in not only getting, um, water, but clean water, and, uh, regu, water on a regular basis, I am all for any resolution that does that. So, thank you for your leadership, thank you, Commissioner Collo, and, um, I'm happy to, you know, um, recommend this to McDonald Price, Scott and Weiss. There's a typo in here with, um, with Senator Pierce slash Price.
Oh, you're right, should be Price. Are, are you making the motion?
Oh, sure. Um, so I would make a motion that we adopt the resolutions that is stated before us.
Motion?
With the added correction to Senator, uh, Representative Price's name.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herzog. All right, further discussion? I'll say thank you for your support. I think Commissioner Hunt very well said, um, dignity matters, um, financial prudence matters in this case, and, and remember, this is for people that qualify, um, as lower-income households. This isn't if, you know, um, somebody of great income and wealth decides not to pay their water bill, uh, we still have other mechanisms as a city to, to manage that. And also, you know, much credit to our treasurer, um, we do and work with people, we have been working with people, uh, to put them on payment plans and to give them some relief and some help, but without this legislation, our hands are tied a lot. We can't do all the things that would make sense for us to become more whole on some of this bad debt, and when we become more whole on it, the folks that are enduring this pain are becoming more whole in their lives, and I think it just makes sense. If we were a business, this would be something we would be doing, you know, ourselves, but, um, but we're not, thank goodness, and, um, you know, I think it, I think if, if the House can, and the Senate can pass this, it'll make a meaningful difference to communities and to people, uh, throughout our entire state, whether you call Royal Oak home or somewhere in, that's on a rural water system, uh, in the UP. This affects everybody. Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. All right, that brings us to item eight, which is approval of the January 2024 Traffic Committee Resolutions.
I'll take that one, Mayor.
Okay, I'm looking for Mr. Godak. I don't see him here tonight.
No, I think it's just me tonight. Sorry.
Okay, just you, just? You're amazing. Ms. Donahue?
Thank you. Now, well, good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. I'm here tonight to present our recommendations from the January 23rd traffic meeting, and I just have one proposed resolution for you tonight. Um, the residents of Northwood Boulevard submitted a petition to install 16 speed humps along Northwood Boulevard, and this is between Woodward and Crooks, and we'll be resurfacing that road in 2024 along with some water main improvements, so it's the ideal time to make these changes. You may recall that we previously presented some traffic calming options along this corridor back in October, and after much discussion, the commission had approved a few of the traffic calming improvements and also declassified Northwood as a priority snowplow route, and that then gave the residents the opportunity to petition for speed humps. So, staff did prepare a petition that was circulated and returned for approval, and the residents, um, signed 70% in favor of speed humps along the corridor. I do have plans here tonight if you'd like to look at any specific areas, um, uh, but they're also in your package if you'd like to look at them there. Um, I'll note that we had eight people speak during public comment during this last traffic meeting. Of these, six of them were in favor of the speed humps and two of them were opposed. The committee voted unanimously to move forward with the 16 speed humps on Northwood, so that's eight in each direction if you were to travel the whole corridor, um, and then that comes along with the associated signage and then also the pavement markings, and that would all be built into our 2024 road project.
Um, maybe I'll start with a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, because I know this is something we've talked about and we've been trying to crack the nut on for a while. I think we all agree, um, speeding on Northwood is something we want to curb. Without question, um, people use it as a cut-through, it's very wide and open, folks either intentionally or non-intentionally speed through it. Um, I don't want to speak for the chief, but we do, um, give presence there and do pull people over and do give tickets. Um, you may not see them all the time. We'd be very bad police officers if you saw us all the time and we're trying to give you a ticket. Uh, sometimes the presence is there to slow people down, but, you know, there's 212 miles of road in the city of Royal Oak and, you know, we have to patrol it all, so, uh, can't be there every day. Um, and so, I think, I think we're all on the same page with that, and I think a lot of the debate, even within the neighborhood, although it sounds like folks are pretty unified behind the speed humps, was the idea of, okay, we know, last time we spoke, without question, um, changing the size of the lanes, forcing cars to merge with the, um, design of the road is, you know, ultimately slows cars down. The more narrow the lanes, the slower people... Is that funny? Is that it? It's, so we know that, um, but there's been some pushback to say, okay, well, the trade-off for that is, I'm going to lose my parking, the aesthetics of the road, and so, when we look at alternatives, the alternatives are stop signs, which we know people don't like to use, they blow through them, we have good data in history that stop signs in that case, like my dad used to say, locks keep the honest people out. Well, stop signs, the people that aren't speeding are going to follow the stop signs, you know? The folks that speed are going to roll through them and blow through them. Um, and so, then the question of the speed hump came in, or speed bump, and, um, there's trade-offs with that as well, I imagine. Um, so my question to you is, can you elaborate a little bit more on, we heard some, some, um, at public comment, uh, some mention of some federal highway data that says that it, they do reduce speeds. I know that historically, I've been a little averse to them because of the start and stop, so people slow down at the speed hump, they speed up, which creates noise pollution, creates clank-clank, all of that, um, and, you know, you have that period between humps where people are accelerating, which can be dangerous, um, and maybe that's all good trade-off if, in fact, people's overall speed is slower, if they avoid it as a highway pass-through. Um, can you talk a little bit more about the effectiveness of it, um, and, and, you know, what history has shown us, and give us a, there's no perfect solution here, but a little bit more since, you know, there seems to be overwhelming support for this, this method.
Sure. Uh, so in Royal Oak, we only just recently started implementing speed humps. So, right now, we have them on three streets in the city, so we don't have a huge pool of data to look at. Um, in fact, two of the three were installed this past year, so we haven't even studied their impact yet. Um, we did study the ones on Merrill Avenue, those were the first ones we put in, and we had decreased cut-through traffic on that street by 43%, um, which is, that one was a really bad street, that was a cut-through to Beaumont, so, that was a positive impact. It probably did push traffic to some other streets, if I'm being totally transparent here. Um, but it, but did help with that street, and we also saw that the speeds, uh, were reduced between the humps. Um, and the reason, when we set out the criteria for our speed humps, that they must be 300 to 600 feet apart, is so that you don't have that speed up in between them, that you're already slowing back down again by the time you get to one. Um, and what I really like about these, and if you drive them, you'll kind of get a sense of that, like the ones on Benjamin Avenue, they're only three and a half inches tall, and it's, you know, six feet to the full height and six feet back down. So, um, they're, they're pretty quiet and they're pretty comfortable. So, if you had a coffee mug and you drove over that at 20 to 25, you would not spill your coffee. They're fine. If you're trying to go 35, you might bounce in your seat a little bit, it would be uncomfortable. And, and that's the idea, is we're trying to make it uncomfortable to speed, but that you don't have to go to 10 miles an hour to get over these speed humps. Um, so I think, um, I was pleased to see that noise doesn't appear to be a huge issue with what we've installed thus far, um, and I think the reduction in cut-through traffic has been a, a pretty positive benefit. Um, Northwood does have a lot of traffic, but it also connects to a huge neighborhood, so I'm not super surprised at the volume of traffic that we see there, but I do think speed humps will get rid of a lot of cars that are just using it to get Woodward to Crooks or vice versa. It'll, it'll really be more for the residents that are trying to... It'll really be more for the residents that are trying to get to their houses on those streets. Does that help a little, or?
No, it really does. Because I think up here, we have, we don't have the luxury other than to look at, you know, fact and what works. And I know historically, stop signs and speed bumps have, you know, haven't panned out as well as we had thought. But the speed hump, if you're telling me we're seeing, now, Merrill is a completely different, I mean, that's a crazy animal. I don't think there should be expectations of a 43% reduction in traffic on Northwood, because Merrill had its own unique set of circumstances. And the ones on Benjamin, I've driven, and apparently, I must be an old man because I didn't feel anything when I drove them. I can tell you on Gardenia and Catalpa, I have felt the one there.
That is a raised intersection, not a speed hump.
It's a raised intersection, but, you know, similar mechanics. Okay, so, that's really the thing that I am hung up on is the effectiveness of the humps. And will it make a difference? Because if it doesn't, and folks come back and they say, hey, people aren't, it's not curbing traffic, cut-through traffic, other than the neighborhood of folks trying to get to their own streets, and it's not reducing speed, and it's really inconvenient, cars are squeaking and, you know, accelerating and loud engine sounds throughout the night because they're speeding, you know, we want them out, you know, that's, got to be clear with the expectations. We're not a, you know, it's not a private street and it takes taxpayer dollars, and once you get a solution in there, you got to stick with it. Like, you know, if it isn't as great as you think it is, you know, it is what it is now for a while. Commissioner Douglas.
Ms. Donahue, when you build these speed humps, do you create a gap at an appropriate place for bicycle tires?
So, they are offset a foot and a half from the face of the curb, so what we would consider the gutter pan. So, a bike could go through there. I think it would be more comfortable just to ride over the hump, because like I said, they're not that high, and they go over 12 feet as you're driving along them. So, it's not like a speed bump where you're up and down six inches over two feet. So, I would expect that they'd be comfortable whichever path you took there. Does that answer your question?
I'm not the cyclist. I, this is a friend who's a cyclist who raised this issue, just to make sure that, you know, people on bikes have, I mean, and their suggestion was a skinny thing in the middle of the hump so that they could ride in the lane, in the traffic lane, and, I mean, not have to go over to the curb every, or ride in the curb lane for extended periods. But that's as much as I know, but consider that, please.
I will say, I have not heard a complaint from, I mean, there's only a few streets where we do have these. But I think Benjamin is a fairly popular bike route, and I haven't heard from bikers saying, this is a problem, I don't feel safe riding on the street because of these humps. Take that for what it's worth.
Maybe the trade-off is that less cars, less speeding cars is safer for cyclists too, even if they have a small convenience with the hump as well. There's always trade-offs.
I've carried my message. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Ms. Ware. So, speaking of bikes, just a second, I guess one thing about the Benjamin speed bumps though is that they're at the end, like towards Woodward. And as, when you're cycling, you don't go towards Woodward because that is just a, you know, there's too many cars on Woodward to take a bike on it. So, typically, I'm sure there's have been a lot of complaints yet because as a cyclist, you really don't go over that section of it. So, I'll say that I am, you know, I guess I could support this night. I'm just, I'm concerned that there's eight speed bumps, humps, lumps in the road that we're going to put in, that I think we're creating a rumble strip down Northwood. And I, you know, we'll put this in, and I'm just concerned that in a year, people will come back and be upset that we have this in here. When we're looking at some of the plans that we have, from Climate Action Plan to the Non-Moralized Transit Plan, we could have hit some of the other items and in green space with bump outs, making it easier for cyclists without these humps. So, I just, I think we should be a little bit more strategic in some of this thinking in the future. But, you know, I will support this night. I'm just, I'm concerned that people will come back, and there's no way to take these out once they go in. And when they go in, they're staying there until 20, you know, 10, 15 years from now when we can reconstruct the road. So, I, you know, I, 50 of 70, some people did sign petitions saying that they would want this in the neighborhood. And I think that's kind of on us too, because maybe we need to do a better job as a community coming up with a solution as opposed to giving a speed bump as an option. I think when we approve them at this commission table, we're thinking like Benjamin or Merrill, where there's one or two on a stretch of street. I think eight along this stretch is a long stretch to have a speed bump. So, like I said, I'll support it. I'm just, I'm worried about the residents and the rumbles that might come because of them.
Anybody else? Commissioner Herzog?
I just have more of a comment. I attended the traffic meeting. I thought that was really good discussion, and the residents came out in support of the speed humps. Also, I went to Holly's Traffic Strategy Presentation last week, which was fantastic, and it really gave some background on the strategies around the decisions being made and kind of the strategic overview of the city and how they look at traffic. And so, I think that will be really beneficial to the community to kind of understand where the city is coming from. And I'm supportive of this.
Maybe one question for the chief. Do you think this will affect, and I know you can't speak for the fire department, for EMS, do you think it will affect response times at all, you know, in terms of 10 seconds here, 10 seconds there, using Northwood?
No, I don't think this will affect our response at all.
Okay, good. Any other discussion? Any other questions? I mean, I think the people that'll be most annoyed by this are folks that speed. And then the question is, do we care? So, I don't, if someone's going to complain to me and say that, you know, they're inconvenienced because they can't go 10 over the speed limit on Northwood, I'm probably not going to have too much of a sympathetic ear. But I do think that they can be, these are a better design than a lot of others, but they can be, you know, annoying for some people. We probably might get some complaints. And we do know the best approach that does slow down cars is a better road design, but we know that trade-off with parking and aesthetics seems to not be something the neighborhood's interested in. So, Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, I'm just, I think I agree with you, Mayor. I mean, it sounds like from the description, if I can hold my coffee and go across these, it's like a very, very gentle roller coaster. And if the people who are going fast are the ones who are going to be annoyed, I mean, I think, and I think for both bikers too, like, it's big. These things are, they're quite gentle-sloped. So, I think the fact that the residents like it and our city engineer recommends it, and I guess I will be surprised if we hear from the residents a year or two years from now and saying like, oh, you know, it's like a rumble strip going down there because, then we're going to ask them, how fast were you going?
You just got to check for coffee stains on their street. You have to really understand where they're coming.
Try it with the coffee and then to come back. So, in any event, it seems like a very elegant solution to me, so.
Anybody else, or anybody want to make a motion? Commissioner Douglas.
This is a new process for us, really. It's been, I don't even know if it's been a year since we established a way for neighbor, people along a street to petition the city for changes like this. It's a work in progress. And this is going to, you know, Merrill was one thing, but this is going to be a big indicator. And as we, as commissioners, go forward and observe this and listen to people who live on that street, it may be an object lesson for the future. So, we are, we're all learning at your expense. Thank you for being our guinea pigs. And with that, I'll move approval of the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Cheesem? All right, discussion. The call's been said, that could be said. Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. All right. Ms. Donahue, when can we expect the commencement of construction?
We just opened bids, and construction is planned to start like mid-April, if everything goes to plan.
So, as long as you don't get any bumps in the road?
Uh-huh.
Oh, sorry about that. What do I have, one dad joke left? Do I get two per night? Okay, all right, we'll scratch that one off then. I got two more to go. All right. All right, that brings us to item nine, which is the approval of Special Assessment Temporary Incentive Program.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Tonight, I'm seeking your approval to reinstate a cost-sharing incentive program for special assessment paving of our unimproved roads. In the past, the city has consistently followed a policy that requires property owners petition and pay for the first-time paving of an unimproved road. Most roads in our city were ultimately built by neighborhood developers, and then they included that cost when they sold the house, when they, after they had built them. However, not everybody built the neighborhoods that way, and we just still have about three miles of unpaved roads in our city. So, the city's policy requires that residents pay for road paving based on the length of their frontage along the road. So, properties that have, the front of their property faces the road, they've historically paid for 100% of their cost. And then if you have a side lot where the side of your house is along the road, you pay half of the cost for the first 150 feet. And then if your lot is deeper than that, you pay the full cost for any footage over that. So, as part of the current road millage, the commission approved a 50% reduction for all special assessment paving projects. So, the city was using road millage dollars to pay for half of those costs, helping to relieve that burden on residents. That incentive program expired on June 30 of 2023 because at that time, we didn't know if the millage was going to be renewed and if we should continue this program or not. But now that we know the road millage will continue for another 10 years, I'm recommending that we reinstate the incentive program and keep that in place until June 30 of 2033. We've sent multiple letters to residents about this in the past, just letting them know about the program. And if this is approved tonight, we'll do the same thing and send letters out this month, letting residents know that they have the opportunity to seek this out.
Question, Ms. Donahue. Commissioner Colo.
Thank you. No, I think this is a great program. It's, you know, completing these roads after a century. So, in '21, you know, I've talked about this a little actually, and we had something like 3.3 miles of roads left at that point. Assume some of them have gone down, three miles left in the city. I guess maybe we start looking at what's the actual cost of finishing off those three miles of road and maybe just taking it strategically over the next decade so we can figure out what streets definitely should be refinished. For instance, like Parkdale, people probably thought that was finished prior to a petition going around to get redone, because at that time, DPS was putting down this, and maybe Mr. Phillips can help me with the actual name of it, but it was a hard coat on top.
Chloride.
Yeah, and it looked like cement, felt, you know, seemed like cement, but there's no gutters on the road, and it became pitted, and we don't replace it now. So, now, you know, there's a bunch of craters in them that form every year, and I know because I live very close to one. So, I just, I wonder if we start being a little strategic about maybe using some funds to finish these off. I mean, that's a policy discussion we have, not necessarily tonight, but as we move forward, seeing how this can work into the budget.
Commissioner Douglas.
Ms. Donahue, so, the way this happens is that citizens on a street come and get a petition and circulate the petition on their street, and then typically, your department has to come up with some sort of cost estimate or description of how many trees are going to get killed, et cetera, et cetera. How annoying is that? Or how time-consuming is that? And potential support of Commissioner Colo's recommendation, would we really be, you know, be more efficient if we just went ahead and paved those?
I'll say it's never annoying, because I love to see these streets paved. It's really rewarding when they finally do go through.
Good answer.
Thank you. They do take a fair amount of time, but when residents call to ask questions, the first thing I say is, go talk to your neighbors and see if you think you'll get half of them to sign in favor. And if you don't think you're going to have that, like, we really shouldn't waste, you know, 12 to 20 hours of staff time coming up with a cost, and it's not a design for you. Because we do that before we give them a petition, so they really know what they're signing up for. So, that's usually my advice to them, is make sure you're actually serious, and then we'll absolutely put the time in and put that together for you. I will say, you know, over the years, doing a handful of these every few years, some streets really like their dirt road, and they'd be very angry if we came in and said, we're paving this, you don't even have to pay for it, we're going to pave this. There may be some pushback on that. Other streets, I think, they're side lots, and so they don't care as much that it's not paved, but they wouldn't complain if it was. I've also heard from residents, like, for example, we paved Jutson using CDBG funds instead of making the residents pay for it because it was free money from the government, right? Like, we didn't have to put any money of our own in there. And some residents were very upset because they paid for their street, and they didn't, they wanted to know why this street got a freebie. So, there could be some pushback, just based on what we've dealt with in the past, but getting a lot of these little segments that you see in blue here on the map would really help our city, especially the through streets, I think.
Thank you.
I just have a question. So, I used to live around the corner from Oakmount, which is unpaved, and it's a very small street. I don't think anybody actually has their address on Oakmount because their addresses are Gardenia and Forest and Hawthorne. So, would the, then, houses that abut that street be the ones that would need to approve for that? Is that how that works?
Yes. They would do it, but they would, if this program is in place, they pay 25% of the first 150 feet. So, it's still less, but it's still quite a bit of money, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand if it was only if your address was technically on that street or if you're a property.
Anyone with frontage would be on that petition.
Okay, thank you for that.
I mean, I think over the years, we've seen initially out of the gate, when we first did this, a number of streets came up because affordability was the main inhibitor from folks wanting to get their street or their side street, whatever it may be done. And I think what the natural evolution of this is eventually, you're going to get squeezed down to what, like Ms. Donahue said, you know, some people, like, will just want to have everything the same, and they love the character of their non-paved street, no matter as much pain as it is and environmental issues that it is and all of that, they want to have. And there are some that actually have issues. We've looked at them before where we would have to cut down, you know, 20 mature majestic trees, lift, I mean, it's, you know, there are some that are just real challenging and would just absolutely destroy the characteristic of the neighborhood. And then there are others that probably are still an affordability issue, and some that came down to 49, 51%. And, you know, someone moves out, someone moves in, and for the next 10 years, this will be here as an option for them to address it. So, I think we're never going to get down to zero, so to speak. But I do think, you know, maybe towards the end of the program, the end of the 10 years, it might make sense to say, okay, do an assessment to say, maybe five years into it, for the next five years, what do we actually have left? And let's realistically look at, you know, informing those people that, hey, there's a little bit of money left in the budget, we may go. And you're always going to have that argument that, oh, you, you know, you paid for mine, and I had to pay 50%. And even before we put this program in place, there were folks that said, oh, I had to pay 100%. Well, you know, I guess we don't do anything if, you know what I mean? You know, never make things better, I guess, because someone might have had to endure something in the past that wasn't as great. So, I think we look five years into, I don't know if that timeline is good for Commissioner Douglas or for Commissioner Colo, but I think, I think there'll still be a little bit of a natural evolution as people move in and out, and then you can kind of assess it even once a year. But I feel like at that five-year mark, we'll probably know, you know, what we're left, what the residual is, because it's just, you're pushing the minority then. Yes, Commissioner Herzog.
I'm just curious. Do these dirt roads impact our stormwater system?
Probably, I haven't done a study, but probably. Like, when we go to build these roads, we often can't find the catch basin right away because it's been buried with a ton of dirt over time and probably really isn't draining, but putting a lot of sediment into the sewer system. I don't know that it's a huge problem, but it's certainly not helping. Thanks.
And from a road maintenance point of view and all of that too, it's really challenging to plow and, you know, they cost more to maintain, less to build because they're there, but certainly more to repair and fix. And taking DPS from doing park improvements and having to throw them on a road to make it navigable for the neighborhood, you know, is expense we all pay, right? You know? So, the roads isn't necessarily just a road issue. So, the roads isn't necessarily just a road issue. Paving them does benefit the community more broadly. Yes, Commissioner Hunt, did you, Commissioner Macy?
Sorry, I couldn't tell if you're looking in the mirror.
Both, got two eyes.
Amazing. So, I like your idea about thinking, looking at the 10-year scope of this, then maybe five years down the road, like, where are we? And do we have, do we have budget for this going forward, and how important is it? I wonder if, like, sort of as an interim measure, could we make the rates lower for this incentive program? Like, instead of 50 and 25, 30 and 10, or something percent?
Is that for me?
It's just money.
I can, it's just money. I'll say, you know, as the mayor had mentioned, we got a strong push. I think we paved like seven or eight streets right out of the gate, once we approved this program. And then since then, it's really just trickled, like, maybe one a year, maybe two. So, it's in the scope of the overall road budget. It's not a huge dollar amount. So, it could be considered, but every time you do that, you might be taking funds away from some other project that we might do. I just don't have that detailed of an analysis to say, what impact is that really going to have? Because I also don't know what streets might come up, so it's kind of hard to answer. Not a very good answer.
Well, we could check in in a year, too, and say, I mean, this is something that we can look at every year to say, all right, do we, instead of just pavement, maybe it's a, you know, a throttle up? You know, if you want to check in and see what the progress is, and make that decision then. It's a long-term problem. Been around for 100 years. Not that we need to take 100 to fix it, but.
So, yeah, that's totally fine, but I guess part of what I was thinking is that if we sort of cut the price now, then the people have five years to decide, like, all right, I just want this done in five years, and it's worth 10 or whatever percent. And then five years from now, like, those are the people who are like, I don't want this, or I'm not going to pay for this, or I can't afford this. And it's, we sort of narrowed the window a little bit. But, so anyway, I'm just thinking, if we wait a few years before we lower the price, then we're shortening the time that we can kind of get those low-hanging fruit people, who really want their roads paved, but don't want to pay so much.
Commissioner Cola?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Macy is on to something that kind of could be a good compromise here, where we're kind of getting some, like Ms. Donahue said, I mean, it's stagnant, right? Like, we're not getting many new entries. So, let's see if it's an affordability thing, if that's what one of the hurdles is. And maybe some modest changes, that 10% change, might be a way just to see if we get a couple more improvements, and then we can decide what could be the next step in a couple, you know, a couple of years down the road. Hopefully, improved road, to see what's happening and where we could be.
Or if it doesn't move the needle otherwise, then you've learned something. It's not a financial issue.
Yeah.
No, you guys are commissioners. You can make motions. You can do powerful things with your powerful authority. Commissioner Macy?
I'll move approval of resolution with the change of, that the amount of special assessments will be reduced by 60 and 85%. That's my result, that's my motion. Right now, it says it's reduced by 50 and 75, and I'm saying reduce it by this, so it would go to 40 and 15.
I see what you're saying. So, you said go to 40, to pay 40 and to?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that make sense, or do you need her to clarify?
It makes sense. Just trying to think through that in my head. If the resident, the frontage pays 40%, the idea is a side lot always paid like half of that. So, I wonder if it should be 60% and 80%, just so that when you make that split and that cutoff at 150 feet, it's, the math is a little simpler?
That's what I said. That's what I said. Totally what I said, yeah.
That's exactly what she said. She's a math major.
Just checking.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Cola. All right. Discussion on this one. Yes, Commissioner Cola.
I think it's a good motion. I'm also willing to wait if the city engineer or the city manager wants to kick this around and make sure that these numbers make sense for them until the next meeting, as opposed to fly specking it. But if they're fine with what's being said, I'm also happy to go with this tonight.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I mean, we can always change it next year. Okay, any other discussion? You guys certainly took us down a different road.
That's one. That's, that counts.
They're not that good? Oh, man. Well, if I had an extra minute to think, I'd give you a better one, but I don't. Well, Commissioner Cola, why don't you start telling the pave the way for me? All right. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. All right. Nice work, crew. All right. That brings us to number 10, approval of America in Bloom grant agreement Pollinator Park on Main matching grant. Is that Mr. Fideli?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Fournier, members of the commission. So, I am here tonight with Jill Martin, who played an integral role in the city being awarded this grant. So, the city staff was notified that they had been selected for a Canadian Railway Equal Connections Grant in partnership with American Bloom Organization for the pocket park at 13 Mile in Main Street to revitalize it and beautify it into a pollinator park. These objectives align with the various goals, environmental leadership, welcoming engaged, livable community. And it also tackles a goal in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan for this pocket park. The overall project cost for this park is $24,250. And the specific elements provided by the American Bloom Grant of $11,250 include native plantings that would help develop and revitalize it into a pollinator park, bee balm, Black Eyed Susans, and some other native plantings, as well as providing promotional and educational materials to sort of bring those users that are along the 13 Mile and Main pathway to sort of, you know, stop by and check out the pocket park. There are some city contributions worth $13,000. And that incorporates with the Americans with Disabilities Act compliant pathways that would guide users through a couple of the pollinator plantings, benchways, and then connect to the other side of the sidewalk on Main Street. I'm sorry, 13 Mile. Couple bike racks and repair stations, the construction management, the promote, some more promotional education materials. And as part of this grant, there's a one-time Level 3 program participation fee of $2,300. What this program participation membership permits us is, we will have two trained American Bloom advisors that will be, that will visit Royal Oak and help sort of develop this park into a pollinator park and beautification, help it, help work with the community to address the vitality and environmental initiatives that we're outlining here in this project. Also, as part of this project, I do want to point out, there's going to be a lot of collaborations with volunteer organizations. There were some collaborations with some Eagle Scout projects, the Bee-tweens, Environmental Advisory Board. So, a lot of collaborative effort going into this pocket park to beautify it and make it more sustainable, you know, in a pollinator park. So, tonight, I'm asking that the city commission approves entering into this proposed agreement with America Bloom and authorizing staff to pay the $2,300 for this Level 3 membership program.
Questions for Mr. Fideli or Ms. Martin? We'll go with Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Hunt.
Mr. Fideli, is there any seating in this park?
Seating?
Yes.
Yes. There are. There are currently two recycled composite benches that were installed by the Eagle Scouts, and we'll possibly put two more in there as well.
Okay, I didn't see it in your budget summary. So, I thought I would ask. And I hope that they will be comfortable seats.
I think so.
Good, thank you.
Ms. Hunt?
Mr. Fideli, will the access to the Level 3 professionals that will come in and assist with the planning of the park, is that just for the 24-year, or is that down the road as well? Will they be able to assist in enhancing the park as we move forward in the next few years, or is that just a one-year thing?
It's a one, it's a membership, so it's per year, and I would, Jill, am I correct in saying that?
It is a one-year membership, and that's all we are required to do. But the evaluation, it's not just the evaluation of that.
It is just a one-year membership that we are required. The, one of the elements that's included in that is for these two professionals to come and give not only an evaluation of the park and the design that we're proposing and how we're doing, but they look at the whole community. They'll be here, and they want to see 80% of our community. And they want to take a look at our plans that we have already in place, our sustainability plan, our recreation master plan. And they want to, they'll do an evaluation in consideration of all of our plans and what they see as specially-trained people for beautification elements, landscaped areas, community vitality, volunteer opportunities, celebration of heritage, and their overall impression of the community. And they will provide that in like a, about a 10-page report form. And I've, it would be like a tool that we could use to potentially benchmark and evaluate where we are in some of our plans by a third party. It seems to me like a pretty exciting opportunity to look at what we have and what we said we wanted to do and where we're going.
Other questions? Commissioner Herzog?
That's interesting. I'm trying to phrase my question. So, we've been talking a lot about the plans that we have, and having metrics and kind of understanding where we are today. And so, while I'm excited about this, and professionals coming in and also then telling us where we are and where we're going, I don't know if we've actually done that work to know where we are and where we're going, if that makes sense. So, that's just a comment there. And then the other thing is, how are you, you kind of mentioned that some community stakeholders and boards, how are you going to engage, like, the Environmental Advisory Board? I'm assuming Parks and Rec's board has already seen this. The Community Garden might be a great stakeholder, but there's a lot of stakeholders in the community and experts in the community. And how are they going to be engaged in this process?
Well, we'll be, I'll be reaching out to the effective stakeholders and come up with some of the, like a Work in the Park Day, most likely incorporate it around the advisors that will take place in this beautification project. So, that way, it's a collaborative effort, everyone's on the same page, we're meeting with the advisors and can work together to put together this park.
Commissioner Cheesem?
So, that day in the park, that would be at this particular park?
Correct.
Be on the site?
Correct.
Because, maybe I missed something, but, you know, I know we want to discourage people from driving, but there isn't a lot of parking around there. So, I also do kind of wonder the, just the logistics of getting a lot of people to that park. I think it's a little bit of a difficult park to get to, which made me really like seeing the bike, the bike racks and the bike repair as part of the plan, because I feel like that would be really critical for this park. But maybe, there's a little alley there, but I'm not sure, other than parking at local businesses around there, I'm not really sure the logistics of that. I don't know. Maybe I missed something big with this park. Maybe there's a big parking lot that I don't know about.
I'll let Commissioner Macy chime in, and then I have a thought.
The Bee-tweens don't drive yet, so they'll have to bike there. What?
They have to be getting close.
Yeah, actually, probably the oldest one is. But it's a good, it's a good point, but I'm surprised that no one here was like, what is this park? 13 Mile and Main, we don't have a park there. This is just like a street corner, basically. And if you go by, it has some really not great-looking flower boxes there. So, I understand, I appreciate that, that point that this is not, it's going to be, you know, challenged to find parking for the day in the park. I don't think it's, but again, because of the size, I don't think we're thinking like a million people. So, I think these are, these groups will come in, and, I mean, my understanding anyways, that they'd come in, and like, maybe the Bee-tweens could help, like, put some planting, do some, do some of the planting, and then have some of the other groups come in as well. So, I think, I think this is, I just want to say on your point about the fact that it's hard to find anywhere to park there, is it's not a destination park. Like, you don't, no one's going to be like, oh, let's go to the park at 13 in Main today. But it's such a great little spot, because it is sort of in the heart of that northern part of the city, that your people are walking and biking and driving by all the time, and having it beautified in this way, and I like the idea of having someone who's sort of an expert in beautification to come and give us an evaluation of it. So, I just wanted to say, yes, it's not, it's true, it's going to be hard for that day, but I'm so excited about putting this effort into this little piece to make this part of Royal Oak great. And I'm so excited that we have Ms. Martin here to do this. This is exactly the kind of thing that we were talking about. This is why we needed a dedicated grants coordinator to be bringing this kind of thing here. So, thank you to you and to Mr. Fideli, and always to Judy Davids, for, especially for finding those bumblebees that were hidden away. So, I think this is going to be really exciting, and I'm really glad you're bringing it forth. And, yeah, I think maybe the city commission could have a workday there, too, if we could go.
Well, that would be the bees' knees. Commissioner Douglas?
So, the early concepts in the master plan process identify this intersection as a development opportunity. I mean, you know that the northeast corner of that is a vacant lot right now. There's land there that is underutilized. So, this could be an attraction to help bring development to that community and, you know, concurrently serve what happens there. So, it may be a little park, but it's, I think it's a real opportunity for us.
And I'll just add, Commissioner Cheesem, I think, I think you're right. I think probably if we do it right, it'll be a little bit of an attraction and a little challenge, and people have to walk probably to get there. But in a way, in my head, you know, certainly the park serves a little bit of a purpose already today for people that live in the adjacent area, a place to relax, maybe have a sandwich, do whatever. But I see the improvements that we're making to the park are for the bees, for the pollinator activity. I mean, that's why we're doing it, not so much, I mean, yes, it will brighten up that corner, make it more aesthetically pleasing, you know, increase property values, attract development. But for the things that give us food and that, you know, are so important to our ecology, you know, I think that, you know, first and foremost, you know, the, having another use, another priority for that park with supporting the bees, is, or pollinators, I should say, you know, is hopefully the main attraction.
We'll go with Commissioner Cola, and then Commissioner Herzog.
Thank you, Ms. Rayer. So, after you take out the Level 3 program and bees, this essentially is a $8,950 grant, which is, you know, great, and I'm happy we got it. I don't love how much we have to promote CN Railroad through this, through press releases and media day and everything. I wish if we were doing that, they would come and talk to us about our bioducks that are crumbling, and they refuse to fix. That'd be a great, you know, let the bees fly underneath those bioducks without worrying about concrete falling on top of them. So, I don't love that we're promoting them as much as we are for less than $9,000, when that's something we could perfectly just take on at that point. So, that all the way, though, if we move forward this night, I just want to add to any resolution that we launch a naming competition. I don't think 13 and Main Park is really a attractive name for this. So, maybe we can launch a competition and have some kids submit, adults, whoever wants to submit some names, and let's come up with something fun.
Not a bad idea. Commissioner Cola?
About CN, I know.
Usually one for 10. You got, you got two tonight. That's amazing. No, just kidding. Good job.
One of the things, one of the things about.
One of the things, one of the things about the grant was the $5,000-ish amount that's in there for the sidewalks was already in the grant, was already in the budget. So, it was a way to kind of find matching dollars for funds that were already in the budget and have it count towards our match.
So, it's not newfound spending, it's existing spending we applied to leverage the grant?
Yes.
Smart.
And there's, in addition to some of our local groups that we hope will participate and, and not just a single day, but we also have had some interest. We had somebody visit from, we are Bee City USA, and we had somebody in the summertime that came from Xerxes from Oregon and they came out and they were really excited and have offered to help us with signage at the park. So, I think that's a pretty exciting thing and that helps us keep our Bee City USA certification.
Good.
I just wanted to mention, besides just the Environmental Advisor Board or any other boards in the city doing the one day, all of these boards have their own niche and networks and it's really a great opportunity for communication to the residents about the really great environmental outcomes for doing this in the city. So, I would kind of push on trying to engage the boards in their capacities as boards, but there will probably be some that will want to come out and plant as well.
Perhaps be part of our educational efforts.
I will go with Commissioner Cheesem and then Commissioner Macy.
I just want to go back because I was kind of responding to Mr. Fideli's immediate comment, but I, I'm really kind of excited about this park because I do think it's a really kind of drab-looking site right now. And I can really envision, you know, just the beautiful flowers and native plants. I'm glad Commissioner Douglas asked about benches. That was also on my, you know, list to make sure that there are going to be some benches there, because I do think people will be walking to the park or biking to the park and it'd be really nice to have a nice spot to sit, to see these native plants. And I think it's going to be a really great add to the city. So, thanks.
Commissioner Macy.
I was going to let you, if you forgot, I was going to let it go. I was just going to say one other thing about the way that this is done, is because it's difficult to get there, it's also a pain to maintain, which is why those flower boxes are kind of not well-cupped up. But the idea behind this is that it would be much more self-sustaining so that you wouldn't need to go like mow the little patch of grass all the time. It would have these native plants that are, you know, soaking in the water and also not needing constant maintenance.
Good point. Commissioner Cheesem?
I'm sorry, I also forgot to mention that. I really like that the bees, the riding bees that were at the library are going to be making an appearance again in the city. So, I thought that was really great and goes with the theme of the park, so that was really great to see.
Commissioner Colo?
So, those bees are quite special. And I just want to shout out Mitzi Hoffman, who's asked me no less than once or twice a month for the last three years when the bees are coming back. Mitzi is a former president of the Library Board, president of the Friends right now, and those bees were donated from one of her good friends, you know, Library Board member many years ago outside the library. So, Mr. Filipski's kept them safe in a back corner of DPS and Judy.
The bee hive.
Judy found them. So, thank you to everyone who's kept those safe, because it's great to honor the memory of Joan who donated those.
All right. Anybody else? We have a resolution in front of us. Commissioner Macy?
Move approval.
A motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second?
The naming contest? I'm a no. I'm a hard no.
Is there a second? A second by Commissioner Cheesem. All right, discussion on this. All right, with none. I'll call for the vote. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bee jokes are too easy. Not as good as a jokes.
Let's start way to the next item.
All right, game time. Approval of amendment to joint operating agreement Memorial Park Diamond III. Mr. Fideli again. I see Mr. Sackett's here as well tonight. I just want to recognize him as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Commission. With me here tonight is Mark Sackett, president of the Royal Leprechauns, and one of his partners, Rocky Shaq. So, back in 2019 at the regular commission meeting, the commission authorized execution of a joint agreement between the Michigan Red Sox, allowing the Red Sox to install an artificial infield turf at Memorial Park and other improvements. The Michigan Red Sox is the nonprofit organization that oversees the Royal Oak Leprechauns. They have, the Royal Oak Leprechauns have now partnered with a new baseball league, the Northwoods League. They are, they were currently in the Great Lakes League, now they're in the Northwoods League. And Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is more, this is a more competitive league, developmental competitive league for collegiate athletes. This partnership has submitted another proposal, and this proposal includes additional park improvements of $150,000 and a request to extend the operating agreement for an additional five years. And because of the, the joining of this new league, there would be some additional games, not to exceed 40, though, and then including the Northwoods League as an additional signer to this agreement. The proposed improvements would include two track stack patio seating areas along the third and first base sides of Diamond III, a production shed, merchandise shed, and provisions for a temporary outfield fence that can be moved upon staff's request. As part of joining the Northwoods League, some of the games will be televised on ESPN, which is, calls for the production shed. And the improvements to this park will create many recreational activities for the many teams and events that are, that take place at Memorial Park. The existing agreement is, ends in 2029. This proposal would extend the agreement to 2034. The increase in games will, will happen in May and August. In their, in their previous league, the games happened in June and July. This just extends the league earlier in May and then extends it further in August, which May and August provide some downtime for the, for the park. So, there will be no conflicts with the current Sandlot League or any other leagues that take place and have games at that park. All the other terms of the initial joint operating agreement will still remain in full effect. So, I'm asking the City Commission to approve the Second Amendment to this joint operating agreement for tonight.
Questions for Mr. Fideli. Commissioner Macy?
Thank you, Mr. Fideli. So, the last time this came in front of us, there was, it was for, to an extension on fulfilling the, the initial terms, because there was like some COVID delays and things. Have all the things that were initially planned for in this contract been put in place now?
Correct, yes.
They have?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Cheesem?
Thank you. Mr. Fideli, can you explain the Sandlot League schedule and just how adding these 40 games doesn't impact that schedule?
Yes. So, the Sandlot practices in May and they have their opening day, the first Saturday in June, June 1st, and their games occur in June and July through all the, all the Ball Diamonds in the City of Royal Oak and Memorial Park heavily. There are 22 games that the Leprechauns will play in that June and July months, which are similar or the same amount of games that they have played in June and July in the previous years of this, of this agreement. They've added the, to make up their 35-game season, they've added six games in May and seven games in August. The Royal Oak Sandlot League ends their season the last weekend of July. As part of joining this, this league, I've had conversations with, with Mark Sackett. We do have the Woodward Dream Cruise Car Show event at Memorial Park, so there was notice to let him know that, not to have the games exceed that point into August.
Okay, and just, you know, I'm sure, referred very friendly to Mr. Sackett, you know, things are working out great, but is that in this contract that these, these blackout dates, have they made it into the contract? Or qualifications that we approved the dates?
Correct. So, the, so when you see the blackout dates, you're talking about the car show and the ROSL games, the Sandlot League games? Yeah, so the Sandlot, excuse me, the Sandlot League games get scheduled first and then we have a, a meeting with the Sandlot President and then Mark Sackett and myself, and we go through and schedule all the games out.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Any other questions? Mr. Sackett, I'll, I mean, you don't, don't feel that you have to, or Mr. Grotowski, do you have a comment to add?
If I may, thank you, and I'll apologize ahead of time. If the Commission does consider approving this, there was a typo in 3E. It's my understanding that the improvements looking to be made would be made in April, in May of this year, and it says 2023. So, any approval subject to revisions of that. So, we all miss that. There were a lot of eyes on that and I apologize. So, I just want to bring that to your attention, that we would fix that to correctly reflect that the improvements would be occurring this spring, not last spring.
Mr. Sackett, you're welcome to say a few words. Don't feel obligated to do so, but I never want to call, put anybody out on the spot, but anything you want to add? Come on up if you do, yeah.
Well, I'm pretty loud, being a former school teacher. The decks that we are going to be installing. The decks that we are installing are not going to be just for, for baseball. I mean, they're going to be for the cross-country races that take place. There's going to be for the football, the flag football games that go on. So, when we were planning this whole thing out, I mean, in our mind was, and Mr. Fideli has expressed it to us over and over again about this is a multi-purpose park, and we wanted to make sure we'd make this so that it can be used for all different purposes, whether it be soccer, football, flag football, as well as the baseball games, and not just for Leprechaun games, but for the Sandlot League as well. So, it'd be, be there for everybody. So, that's what we're excited about.
Yeah, I think it, I mean, it's going to be, we get a chance every now and then to go out to a couple of games a year, notwithstanding crazy schedule with our three kids. And it's really nice. I think this would be a, a nice environment, especially with the decks, to kind of open it up and, and give more reasons for more people to show up and enjoy, you know, America's greatest pastime.
Yeah, definitely. The Max Scherzer, our former Detroit Tiger, played in this league. There is many, there's over 340 guys in the major leagues that have played in the summer collegiate league. It's going to be quite special to see some people come in here and we are going to get real involved with the community, continue to get involved with the community, and I think it could be kind of cool, because there's some guys that could come through here that we could be watching in the next year. We play 72 games in 75 days. So, there, we go off far, the Green Bay, Wisconsin, as well as over on, over McQuan, Wisconsin, which is right over north of Chicago. So, we do a lot of traveling. So, it's going to be crazy. But, but it's, but it's a great, great product. We're bringing, we're bringing the best product in summer collegiate baseball, too, right here at Royal Oak. So, we're excited about it.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Sackett.
Thank you.
Questions? Motions? Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'll move approval with the revision as recommended by our attorney.
A motion by Commissioner Colo is a second? A second by Commissioner Hunt. Discussion?
Yeah, I'll just add, when I look at this, we have an existing contract that's been working. We're adding more games, which is great for everybody, and it's not affecting the Sandlot League. We're adding more amenities to a park that, as Mr. Sackett and Mr. Filipski and Mr. Fideli have said, is a, is a multi-purpose park. And I, and we are also bringing in a, a higher level of baseball. I don't want to say that the previous level was any, I mean, baseball is good and it was very enjoyable last time, and this is just a different caliber of that, of that product. And so, when I look at it, I think this is a win for everybody involved, and I think Royal Oakers love coming out to the games, even people in the whole southeast Oakland County and across the, the region love coming to the games. And it's a reason, yet another reason for people to get off the couch, get outside. And I, I said this at the Winter Blast, like stop stalking your friends on Facebook to watch all the cool things they're doing in their life. Go out and do something. Come see a ballgame. Be the one putting those pictures out there, not stalking them on your couch and being lazy. Like go out, enjoy some fresh air, grab a beer, take the kids to the park. And I think this will be a good experience, an enhanced experience over the great experience we've had thus far. So, I'll be supporting it wholeheartedly.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right.
Thank you.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
May the weather be with you.
We got her. No problem.
All right, that brings us down to, I see Mr. Filipski falling in order here to talk about the approval of fleet purchases.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Fournier and City Commissioners. The item before you, as noted, is a request to purchase eight vehicles for the Police Department. These vehicles, except for a couple of exceptions I'll note, were included in our published vehicle replacement plan for 23, 24. And I won't go into detail on any one of these in particular, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about them. One of the units that we're requesting replacement is a, is a K-9 unit. This vehicle was involved in an accident recently, and so there's a, some costs that was, costs that were recovered from that that will be used for that. So, this one wasn't published. It's vehicle 812, was not published in the plan, but is being requested for replacement here. Additionally, there's a, and for that one, the recommendation in consultation with the Police Department and our own analysis is equivalent replacement of a Chevy Tahoe. 815 is a Ford Explorer Evidence Patrol Unit, and it's kind of being split use right now. So, the replacement for that one is being requested also is a Chevy Tahoe, and that will be designated as the tech unit, the Evidence Tech Unit. There is the request for a pursuit pickup truck. I believe we have two or three of these. Oh, this is the only one. I thought we had two at one point. Pickup truck, we do find good use for that at the Police Department, and so the recommendation was to replace this one with an equivalent F-150. So, that is there for approval. We have an administrative vehicle, which we replace on a little bit more of a protracted schedule than some of the other vehicles, and a Ford Explorer is being requested for that replacement. And then lastly, there are four police motorcycles that we have currently that are BMW motorcycles. Those have aged out. They're also really costly to maintain. So, the Police Department facilitated a, a process to review options and, and made the recommendation to purchase and replace those with four Harley-Davidson motorcycles at the costs that are listed here. Included in the packet, consistent with the last couple of purchases here, is the copy of the replacement plan that illustrates these updates. And with that, I will take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Filipski. Commissioner Hunt?
You mentioned that the, well, thank you for this presentation, I'm sorry. You mentioned that the BMW motorcycles were costly to maintain. Are the Harley-Davidsons less costly to maintain or easier to maintain?
Yeah, in discussing this with our Fleet Division, one of the biggest wear items are clutches, and for the BMWs, you have to sort of split the bike in, in two. are clutches, and for the BMWs, you have to sort of split the bike in in two to take the clutch out, and that's a normal wear item, so not only were the parts costly, but in labor time to to fix those, and the Harley-Davidsons are a lot more accessible to the mechanics.
So over time, this will inevitably save the city some money in repair costs?
Yeah, I think if dollar for dollar, I actually believe the Harleys were were cheaper outright.
Yeah, if I may, also, the BMW repairs for normal wear and tire items, clutches, things like that, these have to go out to the dealership to be repaired, because you have to disassemble half the motorcycle, and for the Harley-Davidson models, we actually have mechanics at our own DPW that can do these repairs in-house, so it's a it's a major cost savings.
Do we know where the Harley-Davidsons are manufactured?
No, I do not know that. I believe these are, and I don't want to, I don't want to guess, but the police ones, I would assume would be the US, there are some, some that are built in Asia.
I imagine, I mean, I know there's some that are in Taiwan and and whatnot, but it looks like most of their productions in Wisconsin and Pennsylvania. So with this as well, we're buying American-made, you know, motorcycles.
Yep.
Which makes me happy.
Do you want to know? Parts are made in Taiwan, Japan, Italy, Germany, and Mexico, but they're assembled in Wisconsin and Pennsylvania.
BMWs are pretty much made in Berlin, I believe, with the exception of a another, like a low-budget factory in India for Southeast Asian market. Weird knowledge that I have.
Me too.
Google's great. Other questions, I know there's probably some other questions, I have a couple more, I'll ask Commissioner Herzog to ask the questions.
In your write-up, you talk about the EV fleet readiness, can you talk more, a little bit more about that process? It says that the work is ongoing and expected to be completed in June 1st of 2024, is that the plan, or is that installation of things? Just elaborate on on your thoughts.
Sure, and it's timely today, today, the team of staff members met for this purpose, and so where that stands, what we have, it's kind of a two-track plan that we're on, right now, we do have money in the budget for chargers, as I noted in a previous memo, that we would like to install chargers here at City Hall, and then we have plans to buy four fleet vehicles next year, next budget year. That's all on track as well. The context of the meeting today, and the plan ideally is completed before those are constructed as well, and we discussed that today. The plan that we discussed today isn't limited to what we would like to do here next year, we're kind of trying to take a holistic approach to this, and one of the outcomes of our meeting today was that, in addition to just getting the work done, getting the construction done, is to really closely evaluate what options we have for alternative sources of funding and rebates, and then also identifying pre-selected contractors that can not only help us with the installation of these, but can guide us into the future when we consider these chargers and vehicles at other locations, like the Senior Center or the Police Station, for for just two examples. So the update in in a broad stroke is that, yeah, we are moving forward, and I'm confident in this timeline that I presented.
Any other questions? Any motions? Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I'll move approval of the purchases as submitted.
We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy, discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Filipski. So that brings us to approval of conceptual design plans, Fifth Street Improvements Pedestrian Plaza, I see Mr. Solomon's here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Commission, thank you for having me. So the Downtown Development Authority has engaged in a process to explore a potential pedestrian plaza on the west side of the railroad tracks that dissect the downtown district. This came about through a couple feedback sessions that we've held with the public, as well as business owners, since my time here with the city for two years. This has been a project that I've kind of carried from the beginning, and I'm here now, looking for concurrence as far as the idea. So we've gone through the process of engaging with the community stakeholders, basically what we heard is seating, lighting, green space, art, any number of things that are going to help us create gathering space through placemaking, create some beautification, increase accessibility as far as universal design, and then as well as creating some instances where we might find some abilities to create some climate resilience, some climate resiliency. As we've gone through this, you'll note in the designs that have been included in your packet, it looks a little different than perhaps what you may have seen in previous iterations. The first iteration included a portion of Center Street, it included a little bit more of Washington, a little bit more of Lafayette, Parking Lot 3. As time has gone on, we've focused more in on just the the Fifth Plaza area, so that includes from South Lafayette over to South Washington, which is the portion that's already been closed for a number of years, serves as a walkway as well as a partial alleyway for refuge, and then the portion of Fifth Street between South Washington and South Center, which was closed during the pandemic to increase outdoor dining capacity. Overall, as we've worked with the contractor, Fleece and Vanderbrink, we have insisted, as the community has, on universal design at the forefront. The design that's laid out there is what's called a Waldorf design, where we would eliminate essentially curb cuts along that area, so essentially, once somebody were to use the tabletop intersection, that would be put on Lafayette, they would be on one level surface, and without any brick pavers or things of that sort, that we've gotten feedback on as causing issues with mobility chairs and strollers. Additionally, you'll note that there's a green space right in the middle, as we've talked, we've talked about a turf, the contractors talked a number of materials that are eco-friendly, such as coconut husk, any number of things like that, where we can improve stormwater drainage in the area, while also creating some green space in what could be just a a big concrete canvas, if you will, and then, of course, looking at some natural gathering spaces, so the shade structures that we talked about, I'll recall one of our early engagement sessions, there was a mom who said, it'd be great if I had a spot where I could just go eat ice cream in the shade. Following that, we installed some bistro tables and chairs there last summer, with positive reviews. The hope is to work through this design, get concurrence from the Commission that we're heading towards the right page. This is by no means the final design, however, is the base concept that staff will work with to work towards construction documents, and hopefully coming back to you for a final approval. You'll note in the Commission packet, the design is there, and then with some tweaks that the DDA has expressed staff to work with the contractor on, including ensuring fire access, that the Fire Department, through our engagement, indicated there should be some space for, sightlines are clear for the Police Department, who patrols the area at night, elimination of a kiosk that was included on there on the east side, and ultimately ensuring that there's no confusion about the portion that's adjacent to stagecrafters, since that has to function as pedestrian access as well as alley access. I think I've covered most of the basics, but I really want to field some questions, because I'm sure there's some.
Open it up to questions, we'll start with Commissioner Macy.
Yes, I think my first question, thank you, this is, this is cool, this is interesting, I've loved to watch it evolve and the various pieces of it, I'm just wondering why all the green space is turf? Like, I'm trying to move away from like having everyone's lawns be all grass, but it just seems like now we've replaced all of this, what could be nice green space with with turf, which I don't personally love as much, so I'm just wondering what the thought process was.
It's no secret that this area right now has a high population of foot traffic in the evenings, and one thing that we wanted to ensure was that we aren't having to revisit and replant sod every three months. That's not necessarily as, that's not sustainable from a maintenance standpoint, as well as not necessarily going to lead to, you know, it's going to lead to some cleaning issues as far as, we want to make sure that we're providing space for children to play, without it getting to be a muddy mess kind of in the middle during those spring moments. We wanted to plant a plaza that was usable in all four seasons by way of programming, and ultimately, we were worried a little bit about the foot traffic aspect ripping up some of that grass. However, we're not necessarily to the final materials list, and so as we work through that, we're continuing to talk about the options as well, and are, of course, open to feedback from the Commission.
I have a quick follow-up question. So that foot traffic that's there now is largely, I think, because there's tables and chairs, and that's actually like a dining area, basically, out there, so is the is the idea, the thought that this would be filled with tables, bistro tables for the restaurants that are there?
So the intent is for this to be an open-to-the-public area. If adjacent restaurants wanted to work through the process with engineering for sidewalk cafes, we would still hope to have that space available there, but in terms of the bistro tables, that would be for anybody who's out shopping, eating, the bistro tables would be used in the portions that are considered shade structures, and we would just be utilizing furniture that we already own in that regard.
Commissioner Collo, then Commissioner Herzog.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, you know, thank you for the presentation, it was it was good to finally see this, I've heard a lot about it, but the Commission's never really talked about it, so it's good to see that this is going. I know that this has been a conversation long coming in the DDA, a lot of people have worked extremely hard on this, and, you know, I think Fleece and Vanderbrink did a great job, you know, drawing up some designs, and I think that this is a good first start to where we can go. You know, when I look at this, I think to myself that there's a lot going on. When we initially shut down Fifth Street, this was in the pandemic, and we were just looking at ways to get people outside, we have a couple establishments there who have high capacities, and this is a way to have people congregate in those areas and be safe while they do it. So it was kind of a pandemic mystery, like, will this work or not? And then we did it, and it did work, you know, shutting down Fifth Street did it at all impede people using the plaza, in fact, to increase, people could walk about it and enjoy it. So then, you know, fast forward, you know, actually, just this week, we got a great award, top five city in the state for business growth and being a city that fosters relationships. So thank you to our DDA and Economic Development Team, City Managers Office, and everyone, but this is a testament to how we work with our businesses to make sure that downtown's vibrant, that's good for residents and businesses alike. So looking at that, I did reach out to some DDA members today, and I I think it would behoove us to maybe take a quick pause on this and think about some strategies we can have moving forward, maybe we can all, you know, I think it might be beneficial if a couple of us all just got together and maybe walked around the site and thought about, are these design characteristics that we want? You know, one thing I'm looking for, I'd really like to know, what's our purpose? Like, what what goals we try to achieve, and how do we build for that? Because there's a lot of good things in this park, I'm not sure we're hitting all the goals that we might have been looking at. And then we get some conversations about materials at that point, looking at, is it appropriate benching, you know, synthetic turf? You know, I I think grass works in a lot of areas, right, you know, Central Park in Manhattan, I don't think has an issue with people walking on the grass and, you know, destroying it, so I I think there's a lot of conversations like that, that can happen, but I know that this isn't planned, we're not going out to construction this year, there's not a rush to get this done at the moment, this might be a good pause for us to take, and really just kind of get together, a small group of Commissioners and DDA members, kind of brainstorm, is this where we're moving in the right direction for right now? And not to say that, you know, good designs here, just it's two large city blocks, and does concern downtown residents, but concerns residents at large, this is all of Royal Oak, so I think a pause and kind of, everyone paying some input, before we say this is our design might be good.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I guess if there's not a urgent, urgent timeline, maybe, Mr. Solomon, like, we don't have to, like, get shovels in the ground next week, I don't I don't think that's a half-bad suggestion at all.
The original hope when we worked through the process on this was to break ground in spring of 2023, as you can see, the timeline on that has not panned out, which is, we've been working through this process, we ran public engagement sessions, which had some some great feedback through surveys online, as well as in person, led by myself, as well as Fleece and Vanderbrink, last March, April, May, into June, and then we've also continued to do our annual listing sessions with the public, where this was also an included topic as part of that. Our hope was to come and get concurrence as far as a concept, not necessarily final approval on the designs, just so we can start working on those material costs, we can start looking at what do the construction documents look like, so we can eventually bid this out. We're starting to get near the end of the season for prime bidding, where we will start getting into the point where construction costs just balloon for the season, and this won't potentially happen until 2025.
Commissioner Herzog?
So I love this corridor, I love, you talked about accessibility for folks, and of course, the community came out and said they want green space, climate resiliency. The thing that made me have a huge pause on this design is the synthetic turf, I know that you haven't talked about materials, but there'd be a no-go for me on anything with synthetic turf, the microplastics by a stormwater drain and entering our waterways is a huge concern, public health-wise and environmental-wise, just the durability of such a product, the recyclability of it, there's just a lot of concerns about synthetic turf, so you know that we might be slowing down this process, and I would hope that we would come up with a healthier, more eco-friendly solution than this.
And we can definitely, regardless of the Commission's decision tonight, we can take that feedback and definitely include that in the material specs, as far as asking Fleece and Vanderbrink, what does the what does the design look like when we go with a grass lawn, what does the design look like when we go with a synthetic lawn? That way, those options are there, and definitely heard on the microplastics and sustainability.
Anybody else? Commissioner Douglas, you're right.
Thank you, Mayor. So Commissioner Macy knows this, and Mr. Fideli is not here, but he would know this as well, at the last Parks and Rec Board meeting, I spoke as a citizen in favor of comfortable seating, and I look at the seating options that are suggested here, and none of them are comfortable. The the seating benches appear to be deep enough, they don't have a back, the those bistro chairs and tables seemed like a good idea at the time, but if you remember that the average American woman weighs 170 pounds, and the average American male weighs about 200 pounds, those bistro chairs are not comfortable. Adirondack chairs, you know, are a great idea, I suppose, but they lean so far back that they stifle conversation, so I, I mean, I would definitely, I mean, and Commissioner Collo suggested that we maybe open this process up and take a little more time with it, I would be asking that all of the seating be something that seniors can enjoy, that people with varying abilities can enjoy, I I picture a nursing mother looking for a comfortable place to sit and rest, all of those needs, I just feel are not met with the seating options offered here.
So what I'm hearing is that, at a 10,000-foot level, this is exactly kind of what we're looking for with this corridor here, like, we want to make it, I think Mr. Solomon kicked it off perfectly, we want engagement, we want activation, we want, you know, environmental considerations in managing stormwater, and making things nicer and better and and greater, and putting green space in the middle of our of our downtown. But what I also hear is there's a few things that, you know, Commissioners, like Commissioner Douglas, for example, has a lot of experience with Aging in Place, and I mean that from your assignments on the Aging in Place Task Force.
You can take it any way you want.
And I know we have Commissioner Herzog, who has a lot of interest on the EAB, experience on the EAB, and a lot that can offer, I'm wondering, to Commissioner Collo's point, you know, does it make sense to not totally rip all this apart or anything, because I think in concept, everything's like, great, but maybe there's a little bit of this Commission input here that can, you know, help, maybe of this commission input here that can, you know, help maybe reshape it before we go to bid or before we go to the material specs, just because there might be a few things that could change dramatically here. And, you know, I don't know if it has to be something formal, or if there's volunteers from this body that want to participate with, with Mr. Solomon and the DDA in short order to take a look and, and offer up those ideas and see what the service provider can do. That might make sense as opposed to, you know, just in case we get stuck in a cycle of locked-in design. Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, I think that sounds great. First of all, so actually, Adirondack chairs are fine for nursing moms. It's kind of comfortable, but when I saw these chair options, I laughed out loud thinking of you, Commissioner Douglas, because these were precisely the chair, the kind that you came and complained to us about. So I knew I was going to hear that today. It sounds to me like we have three volunteers at this table, not me, who would like to take this on. And it also sounds to me like you're in a bit of a hurry. So I, I don't know if it, those, if three people want to put themselves forward and start working on this committee sooner rather than later, but I do want to see this happen. I think it's going to be really nice, and I, I'm excited for all of your great brains to put good improvements in there.
Mr. Solomon, do you feel comfortable grabbing a few DDA members that are on this committee or that are passionate about it and mixing them up with three volunteers here and kind of, not, I don't say doing it informally, but we're, you know, we just have to limit it to three. You know what I mean? We can't have any, you know, open it up to the public, publish the meeting, open or whatever, but it's not a agenda workload meeting. It's to go over everything and share ideas and then, you know, get it back here in short order to kind of take the next step. Is that something you feel comfortable with?
I can definitely go back to our infrastructure committee and whip together some folks to take part in that.
I'll just ask, I didn't see a zip line in here. A little disappointed, because I think this would be an amazing path to go down over the lights. I, I'm just saying. I'm just kidding, kind of. So, yeah, I mean, is that, I don't know if we need to take action on that, or is that well-understood by everybody? I'll look to both our city attorney and interim city manager here to advise.
Do we need to take any action?
Okay.
Mr. Solomon understands this stuff inside and out, so he can lead. Oh, Commissioner Cheesam.
I just want to say, I really like, I, I do also like the concept. I live on the southwest part of, of Royal Oak, really close to downtown. I walk through here all the time, so I look forward to this. Couple questions that I don't need answers for tonight, but I just thought I would throw them out to you. One, when I see the trees, I wonder how big the trees would be upon planting, or how many years we'd be waiting for, for, you know, tree coverage, or if there's something that could be done in the meantime, some shades. I don't know how that works, but that was one question. I did wonder, I'm not quite sure I understand the vision or how we are going to interact with the local businesses that do have outdoor seating in the street right now. I guess I would want to have a little bit more clarity on what the process of that is going to look like, to be fair to the taxpayers of Royal Oak who pay for the streets, but also the businesses that are there. And I had a third thing. Oh, is this going to be a 52nd Park in Royal Oak? Like, I guess I just kind of wonder about the upkeep of the infrastructure, if there's going to be, it didn't look like a pavilion necessarily, but if there's going to be a space that people might, groups might want to rent out, like, how are we going to operate that or coordinate that? So that was, those were the kind of questions I have, don't need answers, but just tossing them out there.
Couple answers for you.
Eventually answers, but.
So on the tree question, some of the feedback we got, I won't name any names of newer parks in the city, but was related to the height of the trees versus the concepts. When Fleece and Vandenberg was approached with this issue, they did state that we can source more mature trees so they, they are more along, so we can not start with little saplings, we can start a little farther along. And then, let me see, the second question.
Seating with the businesses.
Yes, seating with the businesses. O'Toole's has already removed their patio and stated they were excited for a project like this. Robin actually stated that if this brought the daytime foot traffic that she thinks, they may look at expanding to lunchtime hours. And then Fifth Avenue Tony Yezbek has expressed that he is fully willing to remove his patio when the time comes for this to happen as well. He sees it as a net benefit for the area. Those are the two street patios that are out there. And I think there was a third question?
The third one is about whether this becomes another park or how we sort of manage the operations, which might be a broader conversation, but.
So part of the conversation that's been happening throughout the entire process is kind of a two-phase. There's the design phase, and then there's the programming phase. And so we didn't want to get mired down in the programming aspect when we didn't have a design firmed up yet. But programming has been a conversation, is in part why you see in those concepts and the, the ban shells, "ban shells" quote-unquote. Those are shade structures. Throughout the process, there's been talk of, you know, what if we made this one where it's slightly raised up and for a special event, it could be used as an acoustic stage sort of thing. So we have been talking about, how do we design this, and then how do we program it as well?
Okay. Anybody else? Okay.
If I may, one last detail. I neglected in the forefront, one aspect of this that I'm very excited about, Lafayette, Washington, and Center. There was a note about delivery on Center Street. The intent is not to close South Center Street, so there should be no issue with trucks continuing to use that. They just wouldn't be allowed to enter what is currently West Fifth Street. So they'd continue to be able to use South Center for deliveries. But all three of those locations, the intent is to tabletop those intersections. As downtown manager, I hear a lot of feedback about Washington. One of the big things being that crossing that runs right across the middle and kind of the perceived danger, real danger, as a pedestrian myself. And the hope is to tabletop them to where there's a slight increase in grade, where it creates that one surface on the Waldorf design for ADA accessibility, but also is doing some traffic calming in these busy pedestrian areas. That was the last piece I wanted to add.
Perfect.
All right. Mr. Solomon, we look forward to seeing this eventually come to fruition. I think it's a really amazing thing for our city and especially for our downtown, so can't wait. Commissioner Douglas?
Just, do we understand that Commissioner Macy volunteered me and Commissioners Collo and Herzog for this project? Is that, that the conclusion?
And do we understand nobody, you know, will ever put up a front to Commissioner Macy's voluntold?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, now let's get into the weeds. Proposed amendment to Royal Oak Code of Ordinances to amend marijuana regulations, second reading.
Good evening. Mr. Grotowski.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. On the agenda tonight for second reading is a proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinances regarding marijuana event organizers and temporary marijuana events. It's presented for your considerations with no changes or revisions from the first reading, which was, a link was provided in this present document. If you desire to go back and look at the original proposed changes and the, or ordinance itself, with that, if there, if there is support to move forward at second reading, then we have a resolution for your consideration.
Questions for Mr. Grotowski. Commissioner Collo?
I don't have a question, but not seeing any. I move approval of this on second reading, since it is not a change from first reading, and we're only having second reading because Commissioner Douglas was too busy globetrotting to vote on it the first time.
Unbelievable.
And that's all in the motion.
All right, motion by Commissioner Collo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. All right, discussion. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. That brings us to the last item on tonight's agenda, which is the Charter Review Committee recommendation to add table of contents titles to city charter. Mr. Grotowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, also for your consideration, I've worked together with the Charter Review Committee to add a table of contents, a much-needed table of contents, to the city charter as an annotation. So as you well know, we've had our charter since 1921 without a table of contents, and that's been a source of frustration in navigating that charter. When I started first serving the city and working with the Charter Review Committee, I made the suggestion that we can add a table of contents as a annotation and avoid the charter revision process like we would with similar situations where we have a charter provision that might be superseded by state law, where we annotate that to say that it has been superseded and reference state law. In similar fashion, we're able to add a table of contents to our charter in similar form as an annotation. So with that, they diligently worked at, at looking at each of those charter provisions and correctly naming each of those chapters and sections of the charter, and then we meticulously went through those and made sure they matched exactly how they should. And we think that the table of contents and the links, there'll be links provided in the table of contents that'll take you directly to that section of the charter that the table of contents references, which will increase the ease of usability of the charter. And based on all that, the Charter Review Committee unanimously approved the table of contents and unanimously recommended that the commission consider adopting that table of contents as the, as an annotation for the city charter. As a side note, if you've navigated to the charter recently, you will see that there is, the annotations already kind of set up there as a test, correctly referencing it as an annotation with the links that are active. So all that remains is to fill in the blanks that are there, which, again, are attached here for all the headings. So if the commission so agrees, we have a proposed resolution to adopt that table of contents. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Grotowski. Commissioner Hunt?
Well, it's not a question, I'm sorry, but I think one of the most complaints I hear from residents is how difficult it is to navigate our ordinances and our charter. And the Charter Review Committee did the heavy lifting and the extraordinary task of putting together titles to, to these, to the charter. They did all of the heavy lifting prior to my joining the charter committee, and I'm grateful for that. But they did take, it was painstaking, and they took quite a bit of time to make certain that the titles were not only there, but that they were proper and that they were arranged to make certain that, you know, it was easy to navigate. So I thank them for all of the work that they did in this, because it seems pretty simple to put together a table of contents. It is not, so I'm just grateful for them for that.
It's easy when you start out that way. Going backwards, I imagine, it's probably really, really challenging, and to put it into language that people understand, you know, to be able to navigate it.
Very good point. Mr. Grotowski.
And I will say, AI did play a part in that, in the role in that, so this is an AI-assisted project as well.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, and I'll just thank and congratulate Mr. Grotowski on coming up with the workaround, the annotation concept as opposed to the charter revision vote thing. So very innovative. We value your experience here. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other motions? Commissioner Macy?
I move approval.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Collo. All right, discussion. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion does pass unanimously, might I add. All right, that brings us to the end of tonight's meeting. Notwithstanding anything to approve the quality of life for our fellow residents, I will entertain a motion to adjourn for this evening. A motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Cheesam. All right, discussion on this motion. All right, without any lengthy desire to have discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed say nah. All right, the motion passes. We're adjourned.